Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board meeting.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda. Sorry. If there are no discussion, all favor say aye. Both? We have a couple of minutes here to approve. First would be the minutes of the organization meeting on March 7. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? No. If not, someone make a motion to accept them. If there is no further discussion, all favor say aye. Both? The second chat is the public hearing on March 40. 2043. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? No. No. That's why we make a motion for the second. Sorry, it's all, and then by the second. If there's no other discussion, all favor of approving the meeting at the public hearing on March 40, say aye. Aye. Both? The next set of minutes is the regular meeting of March 40, 2043. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All the way, almost the whole way.
We're almost there.
So I know if there are no changes, someone make a motion to accept the minutes of March 40. So. If there's no further discussion, all favor say aye. Aye. Both? And then we have the emergency meeting which should place a motion on 7, it will be greater. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No.
If not? Somebody, can you move, someone second? Sorry. So if there's no further discussion, so all favor of approving the emergency meeting minutes of March 47, say aye. Both? Okay, we have the NRC S grant.
So Bill was going to be here, but not able to make it. But I can say that we submitted a letter to increase the funds of the grant amount to the amount of the bid, which was $28,600. So that's to repair the 55 feet of damage of the stone wall. The letter was accepted and they agreed to increase the grant amount. But this, the town will still have the 25% share. So that comes to $7,150. So Bill and I are meeting with Vermont D.C., the Department of Environmental Conservation. I'm able to play in just to talk about the grant process. But at this point, we're waiting for NRC S to approve the request for the work to be done here summer. And then we need commitment for the 25% share.
We've all owed $3,000 towards that. So we, somebody owes the $5,000 or $4,000 in order to have that project go forward. Whether it be the landlord or the tenant. Well, somebody has to pay for it. Either the town has to pay for it. Well, one of us had $8,000 or $9,000. We agreed 3,000, right? We could pay, now you're going to put yourself. And if you are, to the mayor. You know, with the sheriff?
I have no idea where you find it. It would just be within the general fund. I can get it from one line or another.
Or out of the surplus.
Yeah. I mean, that's where it end up eventually coming from. If you plus and minus, and then whatever you've got left.
But if you want to do that, if you want to ask the world, then it will compare itself. It is a problem with the town. My home had, my home having standards being a problem. That's what I'm involved.
About insurance for my home? With the home, with the home where I had insurance and the damage to the house, your home?
I think it's a unreasonable conversation.
This is the, it's the property coming down off Lincoln Brook. Is that what it's like?
On the left-hand side, one of the towns. The opposite of Dottie Penn's house there. I was through a certain distance, I don't know if it's. Pirates in the town right away, pirate claws.
Was this the one that Bill mentioned a couple of weeks ago about towns with property really? That was engineer wrong? And we accepted that?
Yeah, but that's, we're not fixing that part. But there is, there is some damage to the town section.
Also from that, yeah. It's a, it's a pole that comes up, I think it looked and goes straight down. And it was.
Did you make it?
I have to, to have the adjournment to vote on adjournment.
I've got the regular thing on now. I don't care about it. I wondered where you were. And it's so, probably you can't see anybody or anything or hear anything.
No, it only affects President Dottie.
No, it's not, 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 Dottie had hers repaired and paid for herself.
So I think it's not reasonable. When all of that. Some, well, it's fine.
Well, maybe the car, maybe she's over 7,000.
Yeah. Maybe it might be a feedback approval.
What, even that?
Sure.
Do you want to table this?
I think it's still, Bill, also really, Bill, Bill. Yeah, let's take it for the next time.
Is there any, is there any, I mean, finally? No, it can wait until next year.
Okay, now we have the, what cemetery did? That we did not do. At the last meeting. I guess they didn't go here. When we have bids on different projects in town, they usually own it at one meeting and then awarded at the following. We did not do that. We accepted a bid that's $2,000 more than the budget.
What bid was that?
The moment. And on the cemetery, we did, didn't do nothing with that. We had to just be, you know, avoid.
So who was the bid we accept?
What?
I was.
I ordered, I accepted, I ordered a bid for the mowing of the center of the side of the park. And it did not, because he was the only bidder. But we did not accept.
There was one bid for something that was clear.
That's, yeah. This was more just far.
Usually, so that you have a chance to take a look at different things and you'll see. In this instance, if you're over the budget, you better come up with some more money.
Well, I, I mean, I thought you were done, right? You should have not awarded, right? But he was the only bidder. So I was not concerned, I would stick with it. But the next time, I would do that. But we had a deal with cemetery day because, I don't remember the numbers. You have the numbers, Morgan?
I think you could probably just do the total amounts.
Pretty small. I think five lines.
I worked in ground maintenance. Of course, Grafton Cemetery lawn and mowing is $27,200. And Alberta Landscape reconstruction is $13,040.
$13,040?
Yeah, 13,040.
Wasn't there a bid actually there? There's something else there. Was there a difference in how often they were there? No, it was cool, that was something.
We don't, not involving, I would, I just, I think, you don't check on that. I don't know what to come up with a total.
So when, when I call Peter Alberti, the, on the bottom of his bid, you can see that it says $159 for fall, we have $159 for spring.
You said it there?
50, pardon?
I think cemetery.
No, 159, I don't question. So it's 159 per cemetery. So if you were to multiply that times six, that would be for Alex Cemeteries for spring and fall would be an additional 1908. So it becomes for, for total, 4299, 48. The 159 is approximately two hours of labor per cemetery. On give or take a little bit for fall and for spring, I mean, for the hula ball. He's got 16 hours listed, which, like he said, could be give or take. So it almost comes out of the computer on a weekly basis. It'll bring it to August the 8th, he started in May. But you're not always going to need a weekly mowing on some of those weeks. I did ask if he was called upon, would he be available if there should be any kind of a service that we feel it needed to be both? Most definitely, he said he would. They just became, they just started business four years ago. I did call for two, I did ask for references. I got two personal references and one business. I was able to get a hold of the one personal and one of the business and they couldn't say enough. The business were very happy. On, he was there whenever they would call. Things looked a bit obscene. And there wasn't much they could say negative. Yeah, that's about all I can add. I know they worked. They're very well known as hard workers. I think it's a father and a son. And they used to work in a deep, chief government, key rail side out of. Oh, chemo area. That's all I can tell you about them. I left just.
So here again, you've got one bid, $3,000 over your budget. Thanks for saying that, considering.
What is my budget?
What's the 400?
No, I mean, what, what is the amount?
No, well.
Well, what is the mark on the, on the line?
24,000. And, and the bid was 27,520. And this bid is 14,700.
I grabbed it, 15,000. Your home is 15,000.
Yeah, say 15,000.
It's quite a discrepancy. If I was in business, I would, I don't know what's there. I'd be a little bit.
It's funny. Well, that was one of the reasons why. I think we wanted to do the research and the research is coming out there. Be reputable and you have good recommendations and certainly under our budget, which we certainly use. So I would be, I think, you know, me personally, I'd be a favorite. Give it a shot this year, but.
Did they list any difference in the days they worked? Is it because of discrepancy? Is there any difference in the days they worked or how available they are or something?
Just don't seem right, yeah.
So, and this, you know, they go to 16 moments, directly. And on each one, but that's not going to happen because the style of work one, we only do like this, they do it twice. Now, we used to do it once. We don't have to do it twice there. And then I think during the summer, it's. The grass and birds, we're not going to do it every week. We never know, so.
They will try to.
Yes, I did ask if that included re-wacking and said, yes, most certainly re-wacking, blowing the grass away. Because I said it just said a problem from everyone said, no, that would be re-wacking.
Instead of, like, picking up the branches and all that kind of stuff there.
Well, that's probably fall and spring, you know?
Well, I should do it during, when they, when they mow, I gotta mow where branches.
Well, not.
So look at the email from Sweden. It tells how many times they've already mowed. None of ours, they're cleaning. They're even close to 16. Only one, it's Houghtonville, it's 13 times, the rest are seven, six, eight times.
And where, where is Alberti out of? Like their line?
16 times for each cemetery?
Yeah.
And they're both the same, they're both kind of.
But there's, there's cemetery, you have that most.
Yeah.
I mean, little town cemetery has been brought up all the way.
I'm just trying to skip, I guess I don't get much of such a discrepancy in price.
How, how did we come up with the, just for some history, how did we come up with the budget price?
We took the budget price from last year, thank you. And then for this year, you know, from last year.
The budget amount originated when we had Walter and, not his brother Jim. And that's what they were charging an hourly rate to do the cemeteries. And so we've carried that same budget line item for, since Don was there and prior to that. And so because we branched out for the first time was last year. Contracting it out, we just kept with the same line item. But not knowing what we would be getting into down the road. And if I could just make a suggestion, I know calling other towns when it comes time for putting it out to bid, we might want to consider being a little more specific in our specs. As to, I know some of the towns request how many times they want it mowed up to a certain date because it grows faster. You know, there's, there's different. I can research further into, or Morgan could more specs, be more specific. So we're not into just how many times a year and it's whatever for the discretion. It should be more our discretion than what we want it.
We also have an increase in yield class too. Yeah, that. Increase in the bid.
Looks like you have all these scripts represented.
Well, somebody will make a motion to do something. Then we can move on.
Well, I mean, I'll make a motion to use this Alberta if I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable because, but as far as representative and the taxpayer, of listening to this, if we don't. We don't treat the taxpayer right, I don't, I don't think it's gonna go well. You know?
Well, we are all the budget back for a bit. You know, you're, you're, we, we. Don't say, I just go through or something.
It's quite a discrepancy. I got a sick bid that we may be having this conversation again in three months. They're going, oh, yeah, we made a mistake. But on the other hand, it may not be either.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to take the lowest bidder because of the research that Ken did and everything. I mean. But I think we have to take the lowest bidder because of business.
We have a second for that, Dr.? Just remember, April was here and the local, the cemetery, we don't meet again until another two weeks. And the sashware is going to talk to grow and will need to be cleaned up, so.
If you don't get a second on this, then you go to the other bidder who was $3,000 over the budget. You can't keep awarding bids to people that are over the budget. Where are you going to get the money?
I have a second.
We have more discussion, I'm just popping.
So Ken, I, I, I guess my invitation was, you know, I've, no one really knows this guy. What your, your research is, there are, nothing bad is there?
Nothing bad is, that was said in the two references. And there was a third one that actually knows them and has seen their work. And had higher regards, they're hard workers. That's what I was told. You know, I mean, if it doesn't work out, then it was. Be next year. I don't know.
I'm just looking at Google. You know, I, I did Google one last week. I couldn't find a heck of a lot. You know? Because I, because I couldn't find much on and I. Got a fund. It was picked by the wayside to be totally obvious.
Well, they're a small company. It's not like going to guardian village and sharing them.
No, it's, I mean, I get it. I'm trying to break into the business, but I told you, yeah. Their, their interview, they're all good. One guy is here.
Oh.
Like, one of the things we need to work on, I mean, and say, oh man, that I made them to say. They doubled the price. You know?
Since they did well, like, get the business.
Oh, but, sure. Man, if they're $9,000 below, they're saying they're going to do the same work and they have good reviews. I mean, isn't our duty to? Well, if we have the taxpayer, this town, to go with the lower bid and they're doing the same work. And if they're not good, we can reevaluate it next year.
I can help you. Are you there for a call?
Yeah.
All favor say aye. Aye. Both? Nobody opposed it? Okay. Ballet. I'm assuming you're going to speak in the ballot.
If you would like to.
Well, yeah, we can, we can, we can vote.
Absolutely. Hello, everyone, my name is Prajit Pita. I live on the border of Townsend and Grafton, right at Styles Brook Road. My husband and I have been here, it will be a year in May. And I've fallen in love with Grafton, it's gorgeous. So I'm proposing to open up a ballet school and have a dance company. And also offer post-monthly dances in town for the locals. And hopefully bring in more locals that are a little outside of Grafton. I'm going to change up the dance styles every month from square dancing, swing, disco, ages. But just, you know, something to bring in once a month. As for the school, again, I'd like to have the children that are in the elementary school and also outreach to Townsend and Chester, Londonderry, which is where I happen to be teaching right now, adult ballet classes, advanced ballet classes, and then a women's dance class in the night. And it seems to be going up and getting people, so I'm hoping to bring some more to the community here. I've put in a proposal for the Lindley Foundation down at the Firehouse that's available right now. I haven't heard from them, so we're planting seeds. We see if there's anything available. Like, a space like this would be perfect if I could rent it out. Just because they love overhead in a dance studio. I would only need a couple portable mirrors and bars, which could easily be pushed back to the back corner. Or I could even get some sort of like stage theatrical box that I could make sure that everyone is out of the way. Add his microphones.
And what would be your usage?
Well, the usage, I would, it would, I would love to do Monday through Saturday.
You mean, every day?
Well, every day, but it wouldn't be the whole day. And I would be flexible to, to what needed to be used for this space, like what is happening right now. I, like Vermont's, I, their seasons and selling them. That also, there's a lot of people that this is their second or third home. And like, right now, for two weeks, it's kind of slow, so the space would be available. But I would like something that would be consistent, but I'm also flexible.
But Ken, we have a policy, don't we, on this building?
Yeah, it's, it's a very vague and old one. I think nobody's got it. And evidently, and created by a board several years ago. Only nonprofits were eligible, but like I said, policies are all up to you guys.
This way, it is more efficient.
Are you renting other spaces than the other town? Just, I'm just in Londonderry right now. I'm at the community, Mountain Community Art Center. It's wonderful, the community is wonderful over there. I just, the floor is cement. And if I'm going to teach dance and have people of all ages dancing, I'm looking for a wood floor, which is perfect here.
And you live in Grafton, you're Grafton resident?
I'm right on the border, among Styles Brook Road. Don Lawrence was the head of the cover. We ride across from Chuck and Shiddy. Davidson. Nelson theme music. Like I said, I'm playing seeds, so if there's just like a space that I could use once a month to hold a dance festival for the community and, you know, for the visitors from the inn, I would be willing to do that as well. We definitely used to have a pretty, yeah, yeah, I have a lot of the firehouse. That was my handoff.
How many people are using this, this whole state other than us?
Uh, you've got the, permission, you've got the DRV and the GIA.
Those are all in the evening.
Um, the other thing to consider too is insurance. It would be something you'd want to research with passive. And our municipality. And I will be having with insurance as well.
With the old policy, they had way, I mean, even, even whatever, I mean, we are now, we're being combined and, you know, all that stuff. So we have to end the policy. Whether he should be in any of it, we don't, balance and not balance. It's antiquated.
Well, capital aside, and he said, let's at least listen to it and if it did generate money, your market, put it right back into the building, be one of the one things around here. To do something to this level, though, I wonder if it would be so. Everyday business that we do. That might be the only hesitation I think I would have. I mean, even, I mean, every time we have a meeting, we have to rearrange room. Maybe that's not a big thing during the day. You guys are going to have a little bit of flopping on the floor while we're dancing. It sounds stupid, but maybe that's a consideration. Like Ken said, the life, bill insurance would be huge. I have to be looking to front. And the policy would have to be amended.
You have your insurance?
I, yes, I will, yes.
Billings would probably go up a little bit.
Consider.
And this is a for-profit business, not a nonprofit.
Correct.
That's one of the issues, yeah. But I mean, it does, it could be changed, but that's what's there now.
The first blood come always thinking we should try to ease the burden on taxpayers and try to generate some money. I know it's a different entity, but the town, but I still think we should view it in those terms of this, that this might be. This might be a little too much.
No, they're getting space for everything.
Can you see like square dancing in here? I would also love to put on the premises with live music because I know that there's. I would also love to put on the premises with live music, because I know that there's. A lot of musicians in the area.
I remember you a lot, everybody, this was used that way, you have to go. Place here.
Well, Mary, the one who I think was in charge of the church here, yeah, she showed me this space because she showed me the two. Uh, buildings by the church, and she showed me this and. That I fell in love with it, I feel the history that dance was once, once a stir.
You think the lights look good, the old lights look good.
Yeah.
I guess it would be normal to ask.
Maybe maybe the thing to do is is to put your, put your proposal right. On day, you know, having all you do it, we'll look into the insurance. And we'll look at updating the policy and see.
Okay, do you have a proposal? Yes, but I don't have it broken down to days, so I can definitely email Morgan.
And what's your area?
Brigitte Pena. If you wanna Google me, it would be Brigitte Haberman, because there's more information under my maiden name.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. I'm also recruiting people drafted in to do wedding packages, so if a couple wants to come in and. You know, learn my art, be a mother father, you know, it's father, son dance, whatnot, for right on target. I thought that that could be a great connection to that, it could contribute to the weddings that happen in the area.
I I have one last question, how much equipment? It's just a couple of bars and some and some mirrors?
Right now, I mean, cause again, it's like. It would be not a large amount of that, so I would say two portable bars and three portable mirrors would be great. I could do with two portable mirrors. But that would be. The the major overhead and then I would also have like a little bit of a boutique for athletic ballet wear, tights, knee parts, ballet shoes.
There you go, fair.
There isn't any in this area in southern Vermont, but there's Dance Wear Store is in Raffton. And so that would, I would have that in a trunk or in a league. Available for purchase during the sessions and then it wouldn't be taking up space, I'd pack it up and remove it from the area.
I think it's a merit to hear, I think I think you should kind of think of that. Right, and and see, so.
How much are you about to spend on reviewing the floor here?
Well, of course, ballet ballet is not gonna move floors.
But even things in the square, things might. I'm just asking.
Probably no more than than us having meetings up here.
They could generate some.
Remember too, I think there's a one. Number of people didn't.
They just had a meeting up here, it was one hundred and fifty people. It did blow out, so it was gonna be. Okay, good.
Thank you, thank you for your.
All right, we'll be in touch. Um, yeah. The next idea is, uh, Seth, I wanted to put this on. Because uh, you can explain it while you were what I do.
It should be nice for, if there's not any added expense for the Raffton EVO. If I'm, especially for myself, if I'm emailing someone in the community about. Some select board member that's coming from a lawyer's EVO, so they get a little freaked out. Can't see a lawyer, even a lawyer. So I think I talked to Morgan about it, I don't think it's a big deal, I think Joey even may have one already. I I would hope to have one, although usually.
So I did call Dominia, um, it is a charge of at least fifteen dollars per month for each line. Uh, and then it gets changed as. The board member move on and then it ends and picks up again, we have to renew again. So there is a process for each one of them, that's why they chose not to with the past and then they just kind of went with it, did their personal or you want to create a Gmail or something like that. To use separate, but I mean, it's it's doable, but there's a charge to it.
What if I'm willing to pay for it myself, like if you wanna pick, if you wanna have it, you can pay for it. All that.
Uh, it's up to the board, yeah, I mean, it's doable through our IT. Uh, I just.
I I'm willing to do that, cause I'd like to have them, cause I don't want some people, thanks for my. Magic impact of the. On that stuff, so.
Is there a motion for that?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so I guess my motion would be for a town email of select board members wanting to pay for it. I don't know.
Just uh, for me. I don't have anything. Going business going through the town that. Uh, I wouldn't send through Morgan first, if she just threw her off, it's maybe that's. That's different for me, I guess it's what I'm saying.
Well, no, I'm doing you that, I said, we saw what members wanted to pay for it, figure out there, sure, 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 that's my question.
Sure, I think that's okay. Do you have a motion for that or? It's only a little motion.
Set.
Seth, make a motion, I I made, the motion is for a select woman, they're going to town. EVO, that's what you have, he or she has to pay the. For. Well, if they say aye?
Aye.
Both? Okay. Mike, who's got you now? Don't call people with that, they may be better.
So last week, happened to be the week everything wanted to break, so it wasn't just the grader, it was the loader and all three big trucks. Those are all fixed now, except for the grader, um, I talked to Kat this morning. The grader are hoping to have the the parts this week and get here next week to put that back together. Uh, the parts alone were twenty-five hundred dollars. That was much money.
Yeah, but when we.
Well, five, and I think it's gonna be between five and seven thousand, they said an all-day project, just put that back in.
There's a difference.
With that, they're gonna go right to the cost.
Well, when I get the email, I couldn't make it to the meeting, when I, there's all, this ain't good.
No, I gotta tell you. And that should be about a thirty thousand dollar root.
Well, so, so I bet it be.
So that kind of screwed last week up, but um, this week, tomorrow, we're hoping to get down and do the sign. Program and Cambridge Board and then get back out in the blacktop to finish cleaning up all the debris from the storm. As soon as I get that, then I can get back on the dirt roads and get things moved up, the mud seems to be coming up pretty fast, so.
Yeah, they don't have any other, like, blowers that gone and other other loads are that gone.
Yeah, a lot of them, you know, south of that, really. Really dry out quick, so I gotta get out there.
I don't wanna have this conversation, but are we gonna do anything to make people aware that there's gonna be a sign changing?
I bet signs gonna do that, we're gonna put up, I ordered three. So we'll put them up there, we'll leave them there for a couple of weeks.
Good, good.
Get everybody's attention and then we'll take them down so we can change it again.
And then, someone told me you tried.
I wouldn't keep the bolts through, but you do.
Yeah, so. They gotta do the study, too.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have flyers?
Do we have flyers? I have one.
Was that Austin?
Yeah.
Or what what about the, you just stayed up the? Richard?
I will have to see where they're at.
Yeah, she took that at one point, I don't know.
I'm not sure if they need to redo their flag certificate, we don't, because we've taken it so many times that we're dispering.
Two years, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, so it's been. I think it's seven or eight since I've had to take it, but.
And I didn't talk with him, he may not be interested, John had. Asked me about this, I I, she may not be, I'm not sure.
It's hard, because you know, we don't have a big budget for it and it's erratic, you know, how we use it, but Austin's been pretty good in the last few years. You we can usually, one of us will jump in with him, if we can, just we'll be on.
There's no worse job.
We've got most of the stuff on the blacktop, we just gotta basically clean it out the valley and then from the village down. There's not a lot, I bet in a day, day and a half, we can have most of that cleaned up.
I went to I went to Broadway today, you never, that is actual trap, like with black.
Yeah, yeah.
So nobody's there.
Yeah.
Um, there.
Yeah.
And so the the order goes down, then you can't go, then it goes, you go ahead and it goes, is that, is that the general, can you?
Oh, yeah, if you can, well. Oh, yeah, yeah, you can at least have stuff.
If anything matters, so you go say, you do the day and day out, or let be the way to go, you were using it about.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah. I mean, and with with three of us, it's hard to do anything with three people, because you got somebody in a piece of equipment, somebody in a truck, and usually somebody running around on the ground kind of. You gotta gather up whatever you're doing or cutting or or something like that, so it's, but you're getting nothing else done. You know, you're nowhere else than now, and you're just all right there. So it's hard, usually we're off by ourselves somewhere throughout the day. So.
Just to clarify, you're taking the stop sign down on the ledge, putting it over to the path inside. And putting up the yield sign.
Yeah. Going back to where it was, the way it was before we.
Vacation signs, we put a stop sign and the yield.
We're going to, so you have to have a yield ahead and a stop ahead sign, no matter what. So we will actually put a reflective sign, it's kind of going on that. Just so get everybody's attention and we're gonna put one on, of course, on the damage report side, just on a, one of the posts over there. And we'll leave those there for a couple of weeks, you go people. Do or do dealer gets to warn us and they're on the run after that.
Get back to the grader. Um, did we commit to the thirty-five thousand dollars for the?
You did, you did a month, that's ten thousand for a month.
Or ten thousand.
Mm-hmm.
He's giving some tickets already, as I understand.
Is there?
Fifty hundred, ten thousand dollars.
Is it?
I don't know what the. Right, sounds like you need a fourth map.
I would be happy with that, you could keep poor people busy in this town, without a doubt, with the way things have changed over the years. Hey, you know, we're doing a lot more than we used to. We're doing the over the rail line, we never used to do that when I started here. Um, and with all the ditching and stone line. That's a full-time job, you know, I mean, you know, you get grant work, but you gotta go out, you gotta do it, you got a deadline. You gotta meet those and ditching, you could do ditching, non-soldering, cutting trees in this town for two years and never catch up. And this is a lot.
Yeah, folks, something we could look into, we tell them, just see what the overtime costs and what else and.
That's a good, that's a good discussion for. I told them.
Yeah.
Yeah, never, um, exit, wait, wait, you all spent none left?
Yeah. You you, that's good enough.
Yeah, so we have to, that's that, wait for minutes for. Will River is environmental, the empty. Friends, they did earth moving, can't create covered parts.
That's what happened from COVID, COVID today.
Okay. So somebody wanna make a motion to approve what the meeting, so we won't sign them. Uh, so we're. Or they say aye?
Aye.
Both, okay. Uh, I noticed that there's, um. You have the contract for the yearly, year number one?
Uh, we moved it from last meeting's agenda to this. So we have this contract that we've done in the past for contractors. Who we call upon if we need to. It's pretty basic. Um, start and end a.
Do we, I I'm gonna copy that, are you?
It's pretty sterile.
Um, otherwise.
I'm sure prices are are gonna be higher than they were in those days.
There are no prices in there.
We didn't have prices.
So, I didn't, so I've never seen it.
Yeah, doing it properly, when everybody used to worry about the second. You know, you had, there was so much for a dump truck, so much for. Um, a loader, so much for whatever, and then there's if the town, use a town truck, and there was so much for that.
The cost of the vehicles you just mentioned, uh, so.
Oh, that's just the.
Yeah. Yeah, the research, we don't have that. Say that, one of the contractors.
You're probably gonna contact the contractors on that, weren't you, to see what they would be willing to work for?
Well, there was, there was P and L, there's P and L, I've watched Stevens and I believe it was Lawrence. Yeah, sometimes those are the three or four that were willing to do it.
Right, so I don't know where the prices, the numbers came from.
Well, we've.
I'd have to think that if they're gonna jump into that, they're gonna have to be willing to do it for the whatever price.
But Morgan, some of it on the line is there was an agreement that it was prices per unit. Another issue, price for the dump truck, the price for whatever, value or whatever. And that could be redefined.
And then that come on your FEMA plus federal assistance. There was, there was rates for them on your FEMA.
Yeah, I don't know that it makes, but I know that it won't make sense. Yeah, FEMA could have a, that makes sense.
I think like the dump truck ready plan, all of them now they're on it.
Yeah.
Well, when that contract came out for the pricing. Uh, it was negotiated with all the contractors together, they had a meeting, they all went together and compromised. On the credits.
As a group or individually?
As a group. With select board person or whatever, I believe.
And then, and then I think the contract is all signed in agreement with insurance and all that, I'm sure.
Yes. Well, what it has right now is a contract that anybody that does some work for the town. For example, I've watched Stevens doing the town parks, each to have that filled out from. May, April first to. November or whatever, also with plowing.
Okay.
It's like about three years.
I got it. I'll look into it.
All right, so we'll put that back on, yeah.
The next one.
And um, what's this kind of gonna comply with, you know, consent and showing?
That's what we're gonna have to make it on, gee, that's gonna have a copy of it to give everybody.
So the annual financial plan is just. Signing off on ensuring that the. The town raises at least three hundred dollars per mile for each mile of class one, two, and three town highway. And then the second one is, um, signing off on that we meet the standards for the road and verges.
That is a lot of money that you get from the state.
Um, so we all have to sign that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, well, we're starting that, what's the traffic ordinance this year, do we, do we show them that at the moment?
Now, I I just wanted to point out there, there there was some confusion about whether or not. There had to be a study, I understand what you're doing, but there does not have to be a study. I just wanna put that out, this this flat board can put a stop sign, it's letting for both to put a stop sign, but then on his side. That we don't have to do a study. But there was some confusion on that from last time, so I did some research on this, but. We don't have to expect it anymore.
Seth, what does this study do with you now?
I think it's a traffic kind of, I I.
That's why I think again, you don't end up with very much.
You don't have to do a week, this, there there is no. There is no, the MUT, the manual uniform. Uh, traffic control device manual. What it says is, in the guidance, it says you can do is.
So the study we're about to have, with my understanding, redundant for years ago, the recommendation is what we're going back to. And this new study that we're proposing, is that gonna cost them?
No, it doesn't cost you.
Yeah.
I was gonna, but you know, after this, that was more than I would.
I don't know what you'd be out of it, when it's all.
It does all it wants, we're gonna go back to the original thing anyway.
Well, this is, I regard, what's his name, that did the study, uh.
Yeah.
You know, it was pretty.
Well, the original thought was to have that Athens stop and yield when they did the judgment. There was never a sign of that, it was just a rappel and a national.
That that that's the, probably very weird.
And the original sign placement that was down there that we moved was done when the bridge was done, that's when they put those signs.
That was back in.
That was the state did that, and that was probably eighteen years ago.
Yeah, and weren't we told that there was, I thought we were told, I thought we were told that.
They would have done that, whatever, they lived there, and said they teach all the signs down there.
Yeah, and it's, she had this, it's probably your suspicion, that thirty-five would be a minor river coming into a major river, that was she had a stop sign. And all like, it didn't seem like it, I didn't like that, yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me, I don't know.
It is fine, but it's been up more than five years, you don't need to study it.
That's, that's.
I think what they're gonna do is they're gonna count the the flow of traffic, how many cars pass through in which direction, when they take their. View from that.
All right, um, Ken, you were looking at this?
Uh, yes, I had the uh, last, um. Organization that needed liquor license, and that was the Raffton Inn, um, they'd submitted two first class. Two.
Um, they'd submitted two first class, two third class, one second class, and an outside consumption. Um, when you have a first, it has to have a third with it, so that's why there's two and two, and then a second class and the outside consumption in their area. Um, so I just need your approval, they're the typically usual ones that we've always done every year. And we collect about three hundred dollars for them on our part, and then they pay DLC for almost the same amount.
So we're gonna make a motion to accept the, the devices of, of the, graphing in or wouldn't probably anything, whatever. Did not discuss in all favors they are. Personal committee, you guys have anything?
Um, about to, uh, arrange, um, reviews, hopefully this month. So my, if I get to me on dates that time. Um, and I know the path, so then I would meet, you know, and meet with the guys, but. I mean, we can, that's not gonna happen. We need to have the boys.
Would be better if you did it later in the long. It's all nuts right now. You really have to do it.
Yeah, team's working okay.
Everybody's had enough for a few months. This will be good things under control, and people are gonna take a little time off.
We have any, any other question?
Um, I can give an update on the, I sent those letters for the septens last week.
Okay, good.
Uh, two of them are scheduled, and I spoke with two of the property owners and they will be scheduled. And I haven't heard anything from another two, so I think we're, we're in good shape for.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
Have you had any other, oh, Ken?
Um, just one thing on the dog license, the dog license were due as of today, or at least thirty five behind on the count from last year. So I, I will now incorporate a late fee starting tomorrow. And once I do that, um, I need to, now that we're working with an animal control officer, Ashel. Uh, I have to create a letter to send out all of them, and once they get their letter. Announcing that they are late and they need by ordinance and statute to register their dog, then Ashley will take it from there.
Good.
So I have a little bit on that pretty soon.
What's the late fee?
Late fee is eleven dollars, so if they're renewed, it is nine dollars, if they're not staying here, you need to search. And then only eleven dollar rate charge is added to all of them, as of tomorrow on my computer.
Is there any public comment? Ben?
Um, I'd like the town to be aware of the condition the frigate fence, uh, that is across the great community. That there are some of the pickets are coming down and it needs painting, and I hope that goes on a. A budget for doing something about it sometime soon.
That's, that was one of the things that John and I talked about last year, but it just didn't happen. Uh, but, um, John and I will be needing, you know, when the soap. Those are, I think, even about the cemetery, there's some other works, the trees have to be done, so we'll put that on the schedule. Don, oh, cause Donald go first, unless you wanna be in three hours' time, Donald. Go ahead.
We've met with, uh, Heather Chase on Saturday and talked a little bit about the catastrophe. And we kind of came up with, I shouldn't say we, but the question arose as to what do we do when there is a crisis? What, last meeting you passed, uh, emergency, something or other, uh, ordinance. I haven't read it, I don't know what it says, but is there a provision there that outlines exactly what is supposed to happen when? There's a, uh, emergency declared?
Yeah.
God, God, thank you.
And what does it say?
You'll read it, I hear.
You know, get a copy for long and.
Get a copy.
We get it every year, Donald, it's just that we know.
Yeah, I know, I'm just wondering what the. It became obvious that communication was wrong, that. GMP and graphed the highway and graphed and weren't talking to one another in an efficient way.
Oh, I, I've been to differ that because we were on the phone a lot with Green Mountain Power.
Yeah.
Very quickly, with everything that we came across, we were just getting oversongs, so even though they knew it.
Yeah.
I, I, I literally got up, I was up in our town at two o'clock in the morning, and we had power line down. And I got so pressured, I called the woman, got her out of bed, and I can tell you, I didn't make any fans with her that night.
No, I, I completely agree.
Keen to them, they were, they were not a happening thing.
And, uh, so we, we asked Heather Chase if he could bring some pressure there on DUC, I'm not sure if he can, but. At least you can get something started perhaps in our favor, but the coordination would be more of, of. Of where the outline, where the problems lie, informing GMP that there is a problem there. And then following up so that all three entities are talking to one another in an efficient way. And I'm just wondering if that's what the, the, uh, current memo said or ordinance said.
It doesn't say that, that could declare a disaster.
Yeah, but, and it's quickly.
But you know, I, I read the comment from that meeting, and I thought, a lot of them, a little bit old war. You, you better realize what they have to go through to do that work. And, and to coordinate it and everything, it's tough, a minor thing, it is tough, it's just like the road group, right, trying to plow like that, and to. Call them on the carpet and, and haul them, and chow them, and try to get something from them, it doesn't do any good. I, 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 I think they're out there doing the best that they can do it.
Well, I don't know that that's true, but, um, I just wondered what our role, our attempt role is and. And how, how it's reacted to something like that.
Well, I know when during the very beginning of the whole episode, um, I was calling Green Mountain to make reports. And instead, Tiana gave me a call and I had her personal number, so we were like under her wing. And everything did get reported that needed to be, and that's who Mike had to call in the middle of the night, uh, is her personal line. Um, but I think when it comes to the, it wasn't claimed a disaster, so there's no protocol to follow, like if it was a. Um, an actual state of an emergency disaster, this was not, it just kind of. Take it as you do it.
Yeah, and can it be declared on a local basis though?
No, no, not, not for our, our emergency, I mean, I don't think management is going to, is not for just for local, it's. I think it must be created, I, I was part of my dog, I don't believe it is.
But it can be, it can be a regional emergency, can it?
Uh, it. I don't know, your state, they, it has to be declared, but not by select.
No, 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 it's by the government, not by state.
I just wanna add, um, GMP, um, we need to add a power pack from Monday to Saturday. Up on Parker Hill, Brandon is only five of us up there, but they had crews from Kentucky. And they came up, and, um, Dale, Lyman, and. Because we have, we have constant power allergies up here on the hill. And he, he showed him around, so where, where the outage was gonna be, and they found it. But these, these guys didn't know the area, and, and they said, we're gonna get your power back, and they did. But it took five, six days, but, um. They called in, I think there were ten trucks down at C I C from outside. So, you gotta, you know, you gotta. GMP did what they could, and, but yes, I, I do believe the communication with the no response is, is an issue. And I gathered from the minutes, from the article we met. Um, was she planning to have GMP have a meeting, my folks?
No, we kind of told them not to bug. They, they sent somebody down here, and he, like you say, he yelled, I don't know, it doesn't do any good, so. I believe the extent of that meeting was, don't bother, don't, don't send them to that. It has to happen on a much higher level than, uh, our junior PR people coming to a town of six hundred people. Has to be on a much higher.
There was nothing indicated from her, she's gonna do anything at state level, unless she did something to you guys.
Pardon?
Was she gonna say something, you know, let's say?
Yes, yeah, well, let's put it another way, we expressed our concern, and she took those concerns. Badly, whether she acts or not, I don't know, essentially, she'll try to, because she's a pregnant. She just brand new with the whole thing, so I'm sure she'll try to find her way through it.
It would have been nice if the governor declared Wyndham and Bennington counties. But, um, and after my calls of master of mercy, because there, there were. About sixty nine thousand people out or something, some big huge number for the state of the one, you should have acted on something. That's not my opinion, but it didn't happen.
I think they go a lot on damages too, though.
What's that?
They go a lot according to damages, and we didn't have like damage, dollar wise damage.
I think that's a fever which is, isn't it?
Um, I was at that meeting and, and I think, um. The point that, that most of us wanted to make, and we wanted, wanted our representative to hear, was how vulnerable we are. We lose communications, most people lose com- telephone, uh, when there's no power. So you cannot call and report an emergency, and you cannot communicate for any other reason. Cell phones mostly don't work here anyway, uh, the, the roads. Were done when they could be done, but as you were saying, Mike, you could not even do all the roads until they, they got the wires.
And we all, we all got stuck right here in the village for like three hours, and we ran out of fuel, we couldn't even get fuel because.
Right.
Here trapped.
So, so, so you were dependent on GMP doing their job first, so that you can do yours. Meanwhile, the town people don't know what's going on, because all we know is that we have no power. We had at one point a hundred percent of graphing without grid power, uh, that, that's a lot. And that went on for days, and there was no knowledge how long it would take. And, you know, I have a generator, so I'm looking at my propane, and I'm saying, am I gonna run out of propane? Because I'm running my generator on, and there's lots of us here who are elderly and are vulnerable. With no communication, no way of getting help if help is needed, no knowledge, how long we. You know, if we know we're gonna be out of power for five days, then, and some people did, you know, they moved to their cousins in Boston or someplace. People who have to work from here, who work from home or are now dependent on communications and electricity. They have to go someplace else to work, so it's an economic issue for a lot of people. And, uh, and thi- thi- this is twenty twenty three, and. And to me, it's pretty unacceptable that with the technology available, we're still so vulnerable here. And, and I don't know where the lines of responsibility lie, um, but I would hope that we, as a time. Do some thinking about how we can keep our residents safer and able to work and able to carry on life.
You know, other than the. Couple things that Green Mountain Power could do, power runner, turn off someone's live wire, a few guys on the trees, things like that. But with the technology we have right now, with the old power lines and everything, you know, goes back to the. Mid nineteenth century, I mean, I don't know exactly what can be done.
South power, and south power.
Well, sure, that, that, that's hard, part of it, but as far as. Uh, when storms come through and blow down your lines and everything, I mean, what can really can be done?
Well, there is, there is a way of armoring power lines, that's one technical thing, and I don't know how. Complicated or expensive that is, but some power lines can be armored so that they don't break down so easily.
And, and GMP said that they were, they were gonna do that this summer on whatever the main line is that comes in. To try to get the Old Hill folks back in the, in the current state, um. Cause that's the one that blows out the most, but apparently there's a, the line comes down here somewhere, and they were gonna try to armor that. The guy who aimed to lecture about the generator program talked about that, I don't remember if any of you were there or not, but. He spoke at length that that's one of the things that they were gonna try to do. I think even if you didn't do anything else, getting a word out to, to the people of the town, uh, would be. Would be, uh, definitely expected the select board to.
Well, I, I can, I can just say this though, man, I mean, I've been on board now six years. And, um, we have dropped Green Mountain Power, we have done all kinds of things, and it, it's, it's, it just doesn't go anywhere.
Which is why we asked.
And I don't know what you can do, the only way you can do it is probably representatives, and hopefully that they will.
Which is what we did.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's gonna work or not, but, but you remember, you have more than Heather Chase, you got, you got your center, you know, the center for the. For the county, so you gotta go to everybody, I guess.
Like I said, I mean, it was, it's been a few years, but, I mean, I used to go to chief's meetings, that. Whenever GM Paul was there, and I mean, you know, all the chiefs all, I was the hack out of them. Pretty, pretty much the same, from all of years, I mean, it had, it's been much greater.
Now, there's one question that maybe somebody here can answer that, this came up at the meeting, um. When there is a tree down or a wire down, and I see it, I'm the first person who sees it. It's my understanding that I call nine one one, and then nine one one reports it to you guys and the, the. State police or whoever needs to know, is that correct?
Or you can call, or you can call directly to the power company, you can call, uh, or even report line to them.
And that's what we call us.
There are certain numbers, they'll, they'll, they'll give you the numbers when you call, call to them, and whether it's, uh, like threatening, saying, you always go to that, that's the first thing I do. That you might actually talk to somebody.
I mean, dispatch does route those calls.
Yeah.
Like that.
Yeah.
But, you know, I can remember storms that even dispatch was overwhelmed. And, I mean, they just piled up the calls, piled up the calls, and their hands were tied.
That's why Tiana gave us her number so we could call her directly, and we were calling her directly with any wire that was down.
But the, the problems on the other hand, every time is, we report the power outage, but they don't tell us. When the power line has been removed so that.
Right.
We can get up there because.
Which is.
You know.
Right, I mean, yeah, we were literally going around, if we knew there was a tree and a wire in a row, we'd constantly keep going back, you know. It's three, four times a day, at least, you know, and hoping that someone would get ahold of us and let us know when this, the line was out, so we can move the tree. Um, yeah, for us, it's just constant going back around and back around.
And so if you had a commander set or something, say, which link the three entities together, then that, that would be a solvable problem. Um, GMP calls graphing, says, okay, we fixed the, the line on such and such a road. By radio rather than telephone, they contact a road crew who is now here to go in there and do what they have to do.
But, but that would be, they don't, they don't do that.
They, they will do that if it's not actually so busy, because we actually have worked with them throughout different storms, but this one. They were, is that there were people from, you know, other states in here trying to work, and they had no clue where to even go, so.
And, and then another question, which hopefully also has a simple answer. What are the shelters that people can go to, and does everybody know what they are? I, I believe the school is a shelter.
No.
No, okay, so what are our shelters?
This is the, the school, they don't have the shelters, I understand it, correct?
Right, and the church is a warming shelter, it's not a generator. That's a big pain that there are warming shelter need big.
But here, we do have a generator. You can, you can, you can't sleep here, but you can stick warm here, you know, like I.
Yeah, I am working with Red Cross too, I'm, I'm gonna set up a meeting to talk with. Uh, Red Cross and the superintendent, so hopefully we can get the school back on. But I think that's gonna take a lot more logistical details that are gonna have to be worked out. I don't know what's gonna come of that, but.
I don't know what's gonna come of that meeting, but it is.
Because that was the Red Cross.
Right, and there was an agreement when the generators were in there, they needed, but then it got from from the list.
There was there was some complications.
Yeah.
I I don't know what they, I don't, I don't remember, but there was some. Regulations or something that I would install well or you want to end or whatever, I don't, I don't know, I.
Red Red Cross took us off the list because you can only have so many Red Cross shelters within a s- certain area. And there's one in Springfield and.
Can you do Springfield now?
Yeah, so I think that was why Red Cross brought them instead of legal law.
Well, it'd be a fifty Red Cross shelter, that far, it was pretty high.
Mm-hmm. Um, I want to say, Ward, although if they are for the SU and Bradford and. They are considering um, the high school for shelters. And they're they're doing another, we're up on that, so I do.
It's just tough for a Brown and Reddick to turn to those schools.
Hmm.
But the problem is, if if the power wants to cross the road. And we live on right on your road and it's half a mile in, nobody's gonna get out. Because that 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 becomes another problem.
Yeah, and then how do you find out? Right, how do you even know when you have no power?
And obviously, how does the storm know if there's a problem there if you're not communicating? And spend a certain amount of money when you build a new town to run. To make sure that all the communication links were in place, correct?
Yeah, they won't, but we actually lost all of our stuff too, so we had no phone, we had a generator, but we had no no means of communication there at all.
Same here, we put antennas up on this one. So that there would be radio communication uh, among whoever, I guess, the road crew.
Yeah, but who are you gonna talk to?
Shouldn't there be somebody?
I literally got up onto your road, I had it back from where that tree was, all the way back to its black top, it's snowstorm, and in the dark, and I wasn't fine, but.
No, they're actually not. There you go.
And and in in terms of communications, but I'm I'm just trying to think of are there any relatively simple improvements? Like, you know, some of us have generators and therefore we can get email, for instance. And and if we got emails from. Whoever, the town, uh, saying, okay, we heard from GMP, we might be out for three days and the shelter is in Bellows Falls or whatever. Then those of us who do get the message can try to, you know, drive around and spread it. That's what we did during I I read, I mean. We just informed whoever we could, who did not have a direct communication. So uh, maybe there's things like that that we've done.
Entity. Giving everybody a date on what on I read, not intended, but but rather the fire department. And that's again, my point is that shouldn't there be some kind of command center set up? And 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 it doesn't have to be a national emergency, it can be decided among, let's say, three principles and ten. Um. And once that's done, then it has to be manned and that is, if the communication is totally there and suddenly. Word is getting out to the populace about what's going on.
But still, it's them and the power company not giving us any timeframe or anything of when it's gonna be done. There's nothing to be able to report if you have to go to a shelter, we couldn't tell you, we didn't. I don't think they could tell you two, three, four, five days.
Well, I think even if it's unclear, it would help. You know, some of the folks who really are vulnerable in their homes, if they know that this could be possibly three days. It doesn't matter if it's two days or four days, but that but then they would find a way to move out and that's what some people did on their own.
I think in Vermont, though, if you're not, if you don't have power, it could be anywhere from one hour to two days.
It it depends, depending on the side of the storm, because the way Green Mountain Power works is they go to the largest populated area first. And work their way out to the smaller areas, so here you're you're in a small community and there's a lot of lot happening, you're gonna be. You're gonna be slow, yeah. Sam, do you have something you wanna say?
You're pointing at me, Joe?
Yeah.
I can only see a part of your hand. If I may, I have two things like you bring up. One is this meeting tonight was. Uh, warned at six.
Right.
It started at twenty minutes to six and we're down to number nine on our agenda, the valet school proposal. So I think that when it's warned at six, I think we even know there's some dead air. Gotta hang out and you have to start at that six.
Well, I think I think that's a big point for that. Generally, we have these meetings, we put in the uh, on the agenda immediately while. I mean, we won't even do that, I didn't tell them to do it, so.
Okay, and my other, it's a complaint, my other one, is that the light, uh, there seems to be, I think there's two lights out. In the town hall when you first be on the uh, just different, on the entrance to this building. I think both of them are on.
You mean the porch?
The porch, you call. The same thing. He got three lamps. Two were out, I believe, and I think it's Seth Johnson, he's the junior member here. And he's also tall enough to do without a ladder. So I think if if the town had come up with two sixty watt light bulbs, you know.
And if he falls up the ladder, you'll see the towers.
Exactly, you can take down the cushions for two nights.
I thought we did go down, sorry, we'll we'll see.
So I'm like, that's it.
Is it okay to ask voter of Bradford, my name is Steve?
Sure.
Okay, right. Um, I was thinking the internet communication, I'm not sure Starly would help. With that, when the power and internet is down. Um, you would have to have a generator on it, but people would be able to connect to the internet and order phones to make phone calls during.
But the problem is, if you have power, then you don't need, then you have internet.
Right.
Without power, you don't have an internet unless you have a generator.
Right.
Unless the phone line is, well, the phone line is a terrible.
Just a suggestion of, you know, Starly, it's that service.
There are.
Yeah, I wanna ask, I wanna ask you. Um, what is the uh, plan up in town? Do you guys do an after event meeting?
Do you? We're supposed to, we did after Irene. And we're in the midst of um, getting together again here soon before Green Mountain Power comes on the seventeenth.
So for Amber, is there anything written in for after that?
Yes, we're supposed to after.
Mm-hmm.
The only one that I've been involved in is Irene, so far, where they, for the national.
Um. I I just have a concern about, I know I'm hearing what everyone's said today. Concerned about people without the power, but also, um. We need to do a survey of who has generators. And who has um, the need to, you know, come in, especially if they have any health issues.
Well, GMP says that if you have a medical problem. And you notify them, they will make an effort to get to you, to get you hooked up, you don't have a generator. And now they're putting in generators, as I understand it, out on.
A battery battery pack.
Oh, it's battery?
Battery packs, yeah. If somehow it's important, they'll gather.
Yeah, no, they 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 said that uh, they would they would do that. You know, we're thinking about Sonny Sam after some chronic disease. There's one, I'm sure, like all this.
The battery packs for the pole, right?
So it's an annual, a hundred percent.
No, no, I think the, my, at least I think that it's generated.
Yeah, well, I haven't really looked into it because I already have a generator, so I I'm not up on the details.
At the GMP meeting, when the guys came here, they said they would install generators. Yeah, generators, not just battery pack. The battery packs that we now have, mine last about twenty minutes.
No, this is something other than that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I looked into that too, uh, a couple of summers ago.
Yeah.
And it was like four thousand dollars to put it in.
No, they they provide you at least with a lot of assistance, if not, if it's not even free, I'm not sure.
Oh, or evil, not not in terms of large.
Not for, they have picked some pilot areas that are known to have a lot of outlets and Oldenville happens to be one.
That happens to be the leading one, yeah. And uh, cause we questioned that and they showed us on a map exactly who who was out most and that's something.
Yeah.
And I talked to somebody, I'm afraid I don't know his name. I just ran into him at the gas station a couple of weekends ago. And he said they were, it is, I was installing a generator.
Right.
At the at the very moment that I was speaking to him, so I guess they're putting generators in out that way anyway.
Well, that's that's a program that they put up.
Yeah.
If you were, if you were on their map, you have the.
If you were picked on their map.
Right, then you can you can start it after that program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
As I talked to a fellow today installing it, it's actually a battery pack. Supposedly it will last if if you use minimal electricity for about two days, maybe two and a half. And it's recharged when the power comes back on.
Yes.
But when it's fully charged, they have the option of taking somebody, as explained to me, Ellen.
Yeah.
Take the electricity away from you and put it back into the grid at the same time. That's why they say. Battery pack, not an actual generator, runs on something.
Yeah, that that was a program several years ago. Uh, and the whole idea was they would make the entire community a battery. So that when when there was lots of power, it would store up in the battery itself. And when it was less power, they could drive back if they needed it. And then when I looked into it, they said, well, the installation cost is gonna be X number of thousand dollars. So I failed.
I have the same discussion.
Are you having any other business?
No.
Did not?
Yeah.
The next regular legal year, so Monday, the uh, seventeenth of April, here at six P M.
At six P M.
It's me, I.
Six, not twenty minutes.
Don't we have?
No, you didn't do it.
No, my, we're watching, my daughter.
Um, Joe, it's it's I work here. Could I talk to the Hinkley Brook project for just a second?
Sure.
I don't know if you can hear me, all right? The audio is horrible on this side. I apologize for not being there in person. I was a little under the weather this morning and uh, wasn't comfortable um, being there in person. The uh, piece that's getting repaired is um, getting repaired out to a twelve foot um, width for the riverbed. Uh, which matches what the box culvert is that it's going into. Um, just a a a point of information. Maybe I, and uh, next hundred and five feet or so of the brook. That parallels Dottie, it can narrow to a little feet. And then widens back out to fourteen feet beyond her house. So has all the drainage from the Fire Pond Road um, that spits into our town right away. Um, but that piece of wall that's the additional hundred and five feet up there. Um, after storms is going to deteriorate. Uh, just due to the rolics of when you choke the water down like that during storm dimes. Um, so even though it's in good shape now, um, then the next time we have a significant storm. It will be gonna get damaged um, just because of how it it gets hooked down there and then goes into an immediate. Ends up to get under Hinkley Brook Road. And I appreciate you guys doing the the research on the um, cemetery mowing. Um, it it'd be a good idea to maybe do a reserve account or um, or or just have the funds available. Have increases in in contracts, uh, Athens does the budget first and then. Uh, collect bids after, which uh, which. Um, but uh, now you're you're paying uh. Unless, and and I'm confident uh, in the research that you guys did, that that it'll. Unless now than what you did for Walter and his brother for wages. Uh, in addition, the town supplied the insurance and then. So it would, it would be a good idea um, to just have the funds uh, expenses go up in the future. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just to go back to the Hinkley, the government project, Bill has maps of the canal. That might be helpful if you guys have those for the next meeting, if you wanna talk about that. Please get on paper on how it's formed and what the active projects are. Okay, that's helpful.
Okay, anybody, let's somebody make a motion here. Okay, if they are, you are.